Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the January 27th afternoon meeting in Portland City Council. Would you please call the roll?
Fritz.
Here.
Fish.
Here.
Saltzman.
Here.
Novick.
Here.
Hales.
Here. Welcome, everyone. We have a single item on the council calendar this afternoon. We'll get to it in a moment. If you're here to speak, make sure our council clerk has you on a list because we'd like to make sure we know how many people are going to speak. I think I'm going to be able to allow the usual three minutes instead of having to cut it down to two, given that we don't have 200 people here to talk. If you're here to speak on the item, you need only give us your name. You don't need to give us your address. If you're representing an organization, you need to let us know that, please. It's required under our code. If you agree with someone who's speaking and you're sitting in the audience and you'd like to indicate your support, feel free to give them a thumbs up or a wave at the hand. If you disagree, a polite hand gesture to the negative is also okay, but we ask that other than for students or for visiting dignitaries, we don't do applause or vocal demonstrations in the chamber. That way, everyone feels free to express their opinion and to not have it be interrupted. That's it in terms of ground rules. With that, would you please read the item?
Item 96, refer a measure to city voters for the May 17, 2016 election authorizing the creation of a program dedicated to street repair and traffic safety through a temporary 10 cents per gallon tax on motor vehicle fuels in Portland for vehicles not subject to wait-mile tax and create City Code 17.105.
Commissioner Novick.
Colleagues, citizens, this moment has been a long time coming. The city is known since at least 1987 that we were under-investing in our streets. And every year that we have waited, the problem gets worse because the longer you take to fix a street, the more expensive it is to fix it. We've also known that there are big parts of the city, particularly in outer east and some parts of southwest Portland, but other places too, where it's dangerous for kids to bike or walk or bike to school over seniors to walk to bus stops, or for anybody to bike, walk, get to transit as safely as they should. What we're proposing here is to ask the voters to approve a four-year, 10-cent-per-gallon temporary gas tax in order to start addressing those two issues. We know from talking to a lot of individual Portlanders and from public opinion surveys that Portlanders care about both things. Portlanders want the streets repaired. They also want those safety issues addressed. This proposal would allocate somewhat more than half, to be precise, about 56% of the revenue over these four years, which we expect to be 16 million a year, to paving projects and 44% to those safety projects, many of which have been talked about and desired by neighborhoods for years and years. The biggest chunk of the safety project money will be spent on safe routes to school projects, filling in sidewalk gaps, addressing dangerous intersections, making it easier for children to walk and bike to school. The project lists can be found on our website. You can see how we're planning to spend the money. The safety projects will are pretty much locked in stone. We might have to, we might add a few if we have cost underruns. We might have to cut back on some if we have cost overruns. The street repair projects are not quite as cast in stone as we go out and reevaluate the pavement every once in a while, and we might decide to shift some of that money around. But the percentage that goes to street repair as opposed to the safety projects will remain the same. There will be a citizen oversight committee that will review our spending as we go along over these four years. There's a couple other topics I want to touch on before turning to some amendments that we have and then turning it over to staff and our invited testimony. One is, some people ask, you have a $400 million general fund budget paid for by property tax. General fund budget goes overwhelmingly to police, fire, parks, and housing, similar to other cities. That's why taxes and other sources, why can't you fix your street funding problems with that? And what is important for people to know is that the cities and counties around us, Washington County, Lake Oswego, Tigard, and Oregon City have, over the past 20 years, adopted local transportation funding mechanisms because they understood that the state and federal gas tax wasn't giving them enough money to address their streets, and they couldn't find the money they needed in their general fund either. So last year, this council in fact did dedicate more general fund, adjusted for inflation, significant one-time funds, but we can't count on that every year. Another thing I wanted to mention is that you'll notice that this proposal exempts heavy taxation than any council since 1985 because we had paid the wait-mile tax from this tax. That is not because we don't expect the heavy trucks to pay their fair share. I'm determined to make sure that they pay their fair share. The question is, how can we ensure that actually happens? How do we do it smart? Our concern was that there's one truck stop in Portland, the Jubets Truck Stop. These heavy trucks travel long distances. They don't have to stop in Portland. So after discussing with the freight committee, we were concerned that if we attached the diesel tax to those long-hauled trucks, they would simply skip Portland, wouldn't fill up here, we might put that truck stop out of business for no particularly good reason. So we were struggling with what to do about that. And then an old friend of mine named Brian Boe, who used to work in this industry, suggested that we explore the possibility of something called a load fee, which is where we would assess a tax on diesel as it comes out of the big tanks on the Willamette River, which serve the whole region, which happened to be located in Portland. That struck us as a very interesting thing, worth pursuing. We've asked the freight committee to assemble a subcommittee of folks to look at that option and other options for ensuring that freight pays its fair share. So stay tuned on what we do about ensuring that freight pays its fair share. It will happen. We're just exploring the mechanism. With that, I want to turn to some amendments that we want to put on the table. One of the first one is one I worked with Commissioner Fritz on. As my colleagues will remember, we've had a long discussion about the share of revenues from this tax that will go to street repair and traffic safety. And this amendment clarifies that the ratio of 56% street repair, 44% traffic safety projects will remain the same regardless of whether our revenue estimates change. We will adjust our spending to reflect that ratio. The second amendment is a clarification about how certain tax refunds will operate that implement, would implement our version of the state exemptions for certain vehicles such as school buses. The third amendment amends the explanatory statement to address that 56%, 44% split and reiterate that that will be the split. The fourth amendment is a very simple one. On page eight of the project list, a footnote was unintentionally omitted. This footnote has now been added back. It explains that the neighborhood greenway funding amounts assume that PBOT will also receive additional grant funds for some of the projects. And the fifth amendment relates to the oversight committee. It's a result of conversations with Commissioner Fritz, who suggested that committee appointments will be made by the commissioner in charge, but each commissioner will select at least one member of the committee. And we outlined which member would be chosen based on the bureau and other responsibilities of individual commissioners. So those are the amendments I propose, and I move the amendment so that we put them on the paper for discussion during testimony.
Okay. Further discussion of the package of amendments that Commissioner Novick described that are actually in a memorandum from Mark Lear at PBOT, which if anyone needs a copy, they can get one from Carlin. Further discussion, roll call to put the amendments before us for consideration as well as the measure itself.
Fritz. Just to be clear, I don't exactly like the 56% repair to 44% safety ratio. I would have preferred it to be more like 50/50. It was the result of a long series of discussions in the course of the transportation funding discussions last year, and so I appreciate having it very clearly stated. Aye.
Fish.
Aye.
Saltzman.
Aye.
Novick.
Aye.
Hales.
Aye. Okay, thank you. Any other amendments to put on the table before we start with the presentation? Okay.
I'd now like to ask for Leah Treat, Mark Lear, and Steve Townsend to give the PBOT presentation.
Come on up, please.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner, for your introduction. And as you and the rest of the council are aware, we have been working for years to try to develop a proposal to address funding our street repair and safety investments in the city of Portland. So I'm really pleased today to be talking to you about our latest proposal that represents really a lot of hard work from neighbors and businesses and the many Portlanders who believe that we can and should do better. So this is the culmination of a two-year process that shows there's growing support to begin to address our longstanding maintenance and safety needs with this 10-cent temporary vehicle fuel tax. And the proposal that you have in front of you today refers that 10-cent tax to the ballot on May 2016. This proposal raises approximately $16 million a year or $64 million over the next four years, and again, is a temporary measure. We have a list of specific projects for street repairs that will reduce costly rebuilds in the future and a list of projects that will reduce injuries and fatalities. These projects are also going to make our streets safer for seniors to get to transit and for kids to get to school. And we're going to make many of these improvements all across the great city of Portland. Also, to ensure program accountability and the ability to address changes that may occur as we implement the program, we're proposing a very diverse citizen oversight committee. So one of the hardest parts of my job over the last couple of years has been watching the immediate human, financial, and economic costs of further delaying increased investments in our transportation infrastructure. Sadly, last year marked another year in which traffic fatalities exceeded homicides in our city, a fact that highlights our traffic safety epidemic. Further, it is also unacceptable that our poorest and most diverse neighborhoods have fatality rates that are twice as high as wealthy parts of our city. Survey work that we completed in our recent funding conversation shows that Portlanders also want better-maintained streets. 77% support additional revenue to repair our streets. 86% support additional revenue to make it safer for seniors to get to transit and for our students to safely travel to school. And while it's great news for us, for our state, for our city, that Congress finally passed a five-year federal transportation bill, the level of funding that comes to cities through that bill for street maintenance and safety is well below what we need, and our federal and state partners would most certainly agree that local solutions need to be a part of the fix. Last year, Portland City Club put together a research committee that was going to research the idea to end the funding gridlock. After extensive analysis, as you know, because the city club presented to you as well, they recommended that Portland follow the lead of 24 other Oregon cities and immediately pursue a city gas tax. With that, I would like to turn the presentation over to Steve Townsend, our chief engineer, who is going to share some details about the maintenance proposal.
So the project list funded by this proposal will make a significant difference to the city. Oh, I mean, Steve Townsend, I'm the chief engineer for transportation, sorry. The primary driver for our street repair program is to eliminate future costly rebuilds. A dollar spent on preventive maintenance today saves multiple dollars that are wasted on future expensive repairs or rebuilds. Over the last few years, Portland has developed a refined strategy for maximizing our limited resources. The street repair proposal builds on these strategies by focusing on our busiest streets that serve freight and transit. Not only is the maintenance of these streets critical to our neighborhoods and businesses, but they deteriorate the fastest due to the volume and weight of the vehicles. This project list allocates $35.8 million over four years to street repair. About 90% of this revenue is allocated to pavement maintenance. Paving projects trigger federal requirements to bring ADA ramps up to standard. When those ramps are replaced in a paving project, it is the optimum time to address critical operational and maintenance issues, including signals, street lights, and signage. Because of that, we have set aside $3 million, about 10%, so that these items can be done as part of the paving projects. In addition to the 29 miles of busy street paving, we have set aside $8 million to do spot base repairs at locations throughout the city. Base repairs are done where the street is badly cracked and slumping and has created safety issues for the traveling public. Performing these spot repairs keeps these areas from growing and becoming more expensive and eliminates the hazard. Our proposal for the street repair uses Portland's pavement management system, Streetsaver, which is an industry standard, to ensure that we are selecting street segments that are the most benefit, would benefit the most from street repair. This tool allows us to prioritize maintenance improvements on our streets of citywide significance. The following are a few examples of street repair projects that are included in our project list, one of them being Southeast 82nd, I'm sorry, Southeast Foster from 82nd to 90th. This project is within the limits of the Foster safety improvements, and it will leverage those improvements as part of the project. Another one is one you guys are familiar with is Southwest Jefferson, Southwest Nado from Jefferson to Harrison. This project leverages $1 million from ODOT and addresses access to both the Hawthorne Bridge and I-5. And you may recall, it was actually on the list for general fund and was approved, but with the Multnomah County's improvements on the Morrison Bridge, we pushed it out and reallocated that funding. And this project would be coordinated with the county's work on the Morrison Bridge to eliminate those traffic impacts. This proposed funding will improve, will provide one more tool in our toolbox to help minimize the long-term maintenance costs of our streets, which are used by all. Now, Mark Lear, PBOT's resource development manager, will share details about the safety portion of this proposal.
Mark Lear, Portland Bureau of Transportation. The second major objective of this proposal is to do a better job of taking care of Portlanders. By this, we mean saving lives and reducing serious injuries, our vision zero goals, and providing safe access to walking and biking and transit citywide with a focus on our poorest, diversest neighborhoods with the most broken transportation system. One of the things that makes me most proud of the proposal that we have in front of you today, and I think speaks to the improving public outreach we have around our projects, is the level of endorsement that we've gotten from groups like East Portland, activists who are working on the proposal, and the Transportation Justice Alliance as well. I think it speaks a lot to that growing power we have as a city to really identify the best projects. The other thing that we're doing, the allocation under this proposal will be $28.2 million towards safety. This additional funding will allow the city to make significant improvements in high-crash corridors, around schools, and on our busiest and most-used streets. This next slide gives you an indication of some of that public involvement that I was talking about. We've developed five programs, working with the communities and neighborhoods over the last few years to really identify our most-needed safety improvements. And this slide highlights those, and just let me give you a couple of examples of some of the work that we're doing. So for example, our high-crash corridor program will provide improvements on 122nd Avenue, Northeast Sandy, 82nd Avenue. Our pedestrian network program will allow us to develop sidewalks in East Portland, Northeast 148, Southeast 112th, Northeast 102nd, as well as Southwest Capitol Highway. Our Safe Ross School Program has done this amazing job. It's definitely recognized as one of the strongest programs in the country of working with parents and kids and identifying safety improvements around schools, and this effort will allow us to continue to move that forward effort and build those projects. In addition to that, we've identified critical safety improvements in neighborhoods that will improve safety for bicyclists and pedestrians, all modes. With our Neighborhood Greenway Program, we're identifying two of the highest priority neighborhood greenways in East Portland. Those will be funded under this proposal, as well as additional protection for cyclists in our central city. I'm going to turn it back over to Director Treat.
Thank you. So we also, in this proposal, want to ensure efficiency and accountability. So the proposal includes a very specific list of street repair and safety projects that will be delivered over the four-year program. And as Mark mentioned, this list of projects is based on extensive public outreach and was reviewed with Portlanders over the last year. We have also developed a diverse oversight committee to oversee the effort. The oversight committee will monitor revenues and expenditures and program project implementation, including recommending any required changes to the project list. They will also monitor utilization of minority-owned, women-owned, and emerging small businesses utilized, and provide an annual report to the city council.
Director Treat, on this, can you take, can we go one slide back?
Yes.
On this question of recommendations for adjustments to the project list, recommendations to whom?
So it would come to the oversight committee. Say, for example, if we go out and bid a street rebuild project and it comes in over budget, we would have to go back to the oversight committee to determine whether we want to allocate money from another project to do a more expensive rebuild, or take that project off the list and come up with one, a new one altogether.
So the oversight committee would then make a recommendation to you, and are you then empowered to make that decision?
That's a good question. Can you help me on that one, Commissioner?
That's what I was assuming, actually, but let's maybe we should ask him here if that's the way you read it.
I think if the ordinance and the measure is silent on that question, then I believe that it would normally fall under your authority, Commissioner, and the bureau's authority to reallocate project funds.
My interest here is making sure that we're very clear in terms of voter intent, so that if, in those instances where there has to be some fine-tuning, that we're clear about who has the authority to recommend and who has the authority to act.
Great, thank you. And also, I guess Commissioner Fritz's amendment deals with part of that in that if we do have to do any of those reallocations, we do have to stay within the percentage split.
And the code does say that there's an annual report to council, so there'll be, I would assume that it would be going through the usual director in charge and commissioner make those kinds of VR decisions, but then it's the report.
Yeah, and maybe just to add one thing, as 19 years ago, I was hired by the city to build the capital budget. We would still be bringing our capital budget with these projects in front of council, and council would be approving those. That's part of how you would see that happen as well.
Does that satisfy your question? Okay, thank you. So in closing, I just want to thank all the neighbors and businesses that have helped us to develop the proposal over the last two years. And I really believe the proposal that's before you today is a true testament to the smarts, hard work, and commitment from Portlanders to address this issue. And very specifically, I need to thank my bureau staff, who has worked tirelessly for many years prior to my coming here on this issue. I think this is our fourth time at that. Second, for me, they are just an amazing staff, and I hear from everyone who has helped on this effort of how professional and hardworking my staff is, and I'm deeply appreciative. And I'm also appreciative to our modal advisory committees, the freight advisory committee, our bicycle advisory committee, and our pedestrian advisory committee. Each of them was briefed numerous times, and all three of them have provided letters of support for this proposal. So I think it's a very strong proposal in front of you today, and thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Other questions for Director Treat and her staff? Thank you very much. And then, Commissioner, do you have some invited testimony?
We do. I'd like to ask Fiona Yau-Lu of Oregon Walks, Michael Tetta, representing the Community Cycling Center and the Transportation, I'm sorry, the Community Cycling Center, and Marion Haynes with the Portland Business Alliance.
Good afternoon, welcome.
Good afternoon, Mayor Hales and Commissioners, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Fiona Yau-Lu, and I serve on the Board of Oregon Walks, our state's pedestrian advocacy organization. We are here today to support the efforts to fund safety improvements on our streets here in Portland. We are also here because we stand firm in the shared concerns of the Transportation Justice Alliance that the gas tax is a regressive source of new funding and is not the end solution to the funding and equity concerns with our current transportation system and budget. However, this project list that has been put forth today by Commissioner Novick steers needed dollars towards the areas of the city that mean it the most. Earlier this month, a woman in a mobility device was hit on Southeast 156th and Division, the third pedestrian killed at this intersection in less than four years. This should never happen. No family should have to lose a loved one, much less two more families lose their loved ones at the same exact spot before change is made. It has been made all too clear that families in East Portland see the burden of this lack of investment in any other part of our city, and pedestrians in Portland are killed at an alarming high rate compared to the rest of the country. In 2014, over 50% of Portland's traffic deaths were people walking compared to the national average of about 14%. It is undeniably clear that people need to be prioritized, and our investments have to be targeted in areas of the city where people are the most likely to walk and use transit and must do so on some of our most dangerous roads. The city has stated a goal The city has stated a goal to reach zero deaths on our roads, and we are excited to continue working on the Vision Zero Action Plan that will set out the path to reach this goal and reach it by 2025. We have committed to solidifying Portland as a Vision Zero city since 2013, and to get there requires undoing the drastic disparities that currently exist here. We urgently need funding to eliminate traffic fatalities. We must prioritize funding projects that will serve our city's goals and help the most vulnerable. We firmly reiterate our support for most more progressive funding options, and we encourage you to move this proposal to the ballot for voters to decide. Thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon, welcome.
Good afternoon. Thanks for the opportunity today. My name is Michael Tette, and I'm here on behalf of the Transportation Justice Alliance. Wanted to commend the efforts of the Bureau of Transportation and the Office of Commissioner Novick to prioritize investments in under-resourced parts of our city and offer our conditional support for this effort. I want to place an emphasis on the conditional nature of that support, because we all know and we all feel that we have much further to go if we're going to see an equitable distribution of what makes this city a great place to walk, bike, roll, and catch a bus. We all know that something must be done to improve our streets. We also have a major concern with the increasing economic burdens faced by those who are already impacted by our failure to invest in their safety. With the number of traffic fatalities exceeding the number of homicides in our city, it's clear that our group is desperate to address what is an epidemic of traffic fatalities. We remain convinced that safe streets for all Portlanders should be a top priority, and a majority of residents want to see more money dedicated to seeing this happen, especially where conditions are the worst and individuals are the most at risk. This funding proposal with the current project list intact is a start, but we need to look forward to the partnership that we have with the city and the Bureau of Transportation to a future where the benefits and burdens of our transportation network are more equitably distributed. The regressive nature of the mechanism adds to a long list of regressive transportation fees and taxes, and fails to protect our lowest-income households from higher transportation costs, much less divide the revenue burden more fairly between residents and businesses. Thankfully, the projects listed in the proposal steer revenue to the areas of the city that have for too long been neglected and are unsafe. However, these projects alone do not solve the existing structural challenges in either the way the Bureau of Transportation allocates existing funds or determines overall transportation policies. Due to the regressive nature of the temporary tax on gas, our support for this effort is conditioned on the city and P-BOT's commitment to identify and pursue less regressive future funding sources, to more equitably distribute existing resources, and an ongoing commitment to increase transportation investments in our most dangerous and diverse neighborhoods. If we're going to have a world-class transportation system that serves all Portlanders, we need the continued partnership of the Bureau of Transportation, paired with new funding mechanisms to meaningfully reform the way investments are made for our most vulnerable road users. Over the next four years, we expect to work with the city and the Bureau of Transportation on progressive funding that continues increases in ongoing transportation funding to ensure we can begin to address the growing backlog of safety and maintenance projects, and investment analysis that will allow us to analyze the budget to provide clarity around the history distribution type and current condition of investments made in our transportation network, and increased citizen engagement with a full review and restructuring of all current advisory and decision-making bodies to ensure the Portland Bureau of Transportation prioritizes its diversity, equity, and inclusion goals. Really hope that we can have the city of Portland's transportation system be something that we're extremely proud of, not something that we're increasingly embarrassed of, and we look forward to your partnership in that. Thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mayor Hales, council members. My name is Marion Haines, and I represent the Portland Business Alliance. The Alliance represents over 1,800 small and large businesses from throughout the region. As you know, the Alliance has consistently supported a well-maintained and safe transportation system, and we have acknowledged that additional revenue may be warranted to address the longstanding backlog of deferred maintenance, the cost of which will only grow exponentially over time. A voter-approved gas tax with a sunset date meets many of the principles that we had identified at the start of the street fee discussion in 2014. It's user-based, it has very low administrative overhead. We appreciate the voter approval that the gas tax requires, and the gas tax couldn't be diverted to other uses because it's limited by the Oregon Constitution, the Highway Trust Fund. So, we know that it's going to go for its intended purpose of fixing both the maintenance issues and the safety issues on the streets. I wanted to thank Commissioner Novick and echo Director Treat's comments, that the staff has been really phenomenal on this over a long, long time. We appreciate the outreach to our members. We've had a couple of meetings with the Commissioner. He invited us to participate in a meeting with Michael and some others to better understand both the different perspectives that we bring. We had been focused on maintenance, and we continue to be, but understand that there are pressing safety needs on the streets that need to be addressed, and so that was very helpful. Our support is also conditioned a little bit by a few factors. One is that, and I expect this to be the case, but we want to make sure that these dollars are additive to what is currently spent on maintenance, and that funds that are currently being spent on maintenance don't get diverted to other purposes. We need, we need more, a lot more. This is a start, but it doesn't solve the problem. To that point, we think ultimately there ought to be some additional ongoing city resources, and we very much appreciate the work that was done during the last budget cycle with the one-time funds, and think that's a very smart decision to dedicate a portion of those to infrastructure improvements. But we think there ought to be more of that, especially at a time when we're asking voters to pay more. We would not like to see additional taxes and fees during, on this same user group during the four-year period, recognizing that there may be others out there that aren't contributing at this point, and we don't have a position yet on the new idea, but are open to exploring ways to make sure that everybody is contributing to this shared responsibility. And finally, we want to make sure that vehicle road capacity is not impacted as a part of this. We really think the focus needs to be on those critical safety improvements and on just that maintenance backlog to try to begin to get ahead of this problem, which has been decades in the making. So, we look forward to the ongoing dialogue on this issue, appreciate the committee that's going to be created in order to have some oversight on this, and look forward to hopefully working through a few of these issues and being able to give our full support. Thank you.
Can I ask a question, Mayor?
Please.
Michael, the, one thing about conditional support that's interesting is, the conditions that you're putting down are to occur after this is either adopted or rejected by the voters. So, on the, on the theory that we're going to have to meet some of those conditions in the future, what, I'm just curious, since we've been at this for a couple of years, and we've had a lot of ideas put on the table, what constitutes progressive funding options that you want us to consider in the future?
Wonderful. Thank you for the question, Commissioner Fish. I think that there are a number of different funding options that we could consider, short of a tax on gasoline, that would provide more progressive and significantly less regressive options. Without kind of falling victim and to jump into some of those solutions, I'd really look forward to an opportunity to work with you and your office, as well as the rest of the folks at the Portland Bureau of Transportation, to determine what is going to be the most likely and/or most potentially impactful funding mechanism to get this done. As was mentioned earlier, we have a long, long way to go if we're going to be able to meet the challenges of an increasing backlog of maintenance and significant safety improvements, and we're going to need to look at absolutely every option that's available if we're going to be able to see the kind of transportation that we need to have in this city.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Okay, let's, your next group, please.
I'd now like to ask Corky Collier of the Columbia Corridor Association, the most illiterative man in Portland, to join us.
If you're concerned engaging in name-calling at this stage...
I didn't say illiterate, you said all words.
Corky, you'll have as much time as you need to respond to this defamation.
Ken Marx, longtime East Portland transportation advocate, and Chow Fun Mendy, and two daughters, talk about Safe Routes to School.
Thank you. I am Corky Collier of the Columbia Corridor Association. This is really about simple dollars and common sense. We, when we allow, excuse me, allow our streets to deteriorate badly, it ends up costing us 10 times more to repair them. Commissioner Novick likes to use the tooth decay analogy, and since he's sitting right here, I can't get away by stealing it from him. So, I'll use the car wash analogy. If you don't wash your car, the grime starts to build up on it. Pretty soon, moss is growing on it, the rubber seals deteriorate, the paint comes off. Forget what it looks like. Your value, your investment is gone. The value of your investment is much, much less. So, spending a few bucks every month to wash the car is going to maintain that investment, and that's really what we're talking about with our streets. It's not about spending money, it's about saving money. We're not talking about gilded streets, we're not talking, we are talking about the right amount of maintenance at the right place and the right time. P-BOT knows how to do this, they only lack the funding. My back-of-the-envelope calculations show that I spend about $8.50 a day on my 2002 Toyota. That's for insurance, repair, gasoline, everything. My wife spends about $25 a day because she has the newer Mazda. We both spend about $0.53 a day on the gas tax, $0.53 a day for our streets, sidewalks, bike lanes, bridges, $0.53 a day for all the infrastructure that that $25 a day car is driving on. The average for the, for an Oregonian is about $18.89 a day, and they spend about $0.50 a day, too, on the gas tax. It makes sense that maybe we bump that up just a little bit. 97 years ago, Oregon became the first state to create a gas tax, a nickel a gallon. Now, if we'd maintained, adjusted for inflation over all that time, that gas tax would now be about $0.70 a gallon. Instead, it's $0.30 a gallon. Now, we have a lot more extensive road system than we did in 1919, but we're only spending half as much to maintain it. If we could get away with it, that would be something to be proud of, but we haven't been getting away with it. It's deteriorating, and it's going to cost us a lot more in the future. So, please, push forward with the gas tax measure on the ballot, but as you do so, I ask you to embrace two big concerns. One, the City Council needs to remain committed to fixing our maintenance deficit. The gas tax, this is just the beginning. This is a drop in the bucket for how much we're going to have to come up with in the future. So, we need you to stick to your pledge to commit half of the bump to infrastructure. We need you to go back to the 1988 pledge to spend 28%, 28% of the utility license fee to transportation. It means being fiscally responsible in the face of the next overwhelming political issue of the day. The other big concern is equity. A few years ago, a gas tax was an obvious good solution, but that was before the arts tax, the library bond, the school bond, a number of new expenses that have weighed more heavily on the poor. Commissioner Novick is well aware of this inequity. I think all of you are well aware of this inequity. It's going to take your constant vigilance to continually support efforts that'll offset yet another regressive expense. So, please, move forward with the gas tax, and keep in mind that, oh, this is just the beginning of the struggle.
Thank you, Corky. Just wanted to note for the record, appreciate your support, but as you know, the City Council back in 1988, long before any of us served there, was putting utility franchise fee revenues into transportation. Then, in 1990, the voters of the state of Oregon passed the Measure Five. The Oregonian at the time opined that this would lead to the passage of a sales tax, and that that's how we would fund infrastructure in the future in Oregon. We're still waiting.
Oops.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Ken Marx, and as Commissioner Novick said, I'm an advocate for safety issues regarding East Portland. I'm on the East Portland Land Use and Transportation Committee and East Portland Action Plan. I represent both for the outer Powell Safety Project and for the Powell Division Project. However, today, I speak on behalf of myself and not representing those organizations. I support this tax, even though I am opposed generally to regressive taxes. In fact, when the street fee was being discussed, I sat in this exact same chair and opposed that plan. However, I find that this is the most viable option that we have at this moment. I also support the idea of looking for more progressive ways of funding the projects. Thank you, Commissioner Fritz, for your amendment, for ensuring that the 44, 56 split is part of the process, or ordinance. I really appreciate that, and if it had changed and gone different, I would have been opposed to this project. East Portland has been asking, no, demanding, projects like the 122nd improvements, the 4M projects, and many, many more projects for a very long time. At least those two projects are on this list for going forward. The 122nd projects will allow Tri-MET to improve to frequent service, which is the only route, north-south route, in East Portland that even gets close to the Columbia Corridor, where Corky is the, one of the lead people. These are very important projects to East Portland, and they will be very beneficial to East Portland. I'd like to relay, though, what happened today while I walked my daughter to school. I live on 130th. There are no sidewalks on 130th. We have to share the street with cars that frequently go 10, 15 miles above the speed limit. While walking my daughter to school today, she tripped in a pothole. She asked me where potholes come from. I gave her a technical answer about weather, and cars, and, you know, weight, and all of that. What I didn't tell her was that there has been a serious neglect to deal with the issue of transportation in this city for a way-too-long period. I really am hoping that you will all put this forth to the voters, so that we can try to address that, or those problems, and maybe head in the right direction, a direction that we have, for way-too-long, been stagnant in, and been in inertia. Thank you very much.
You, welcome.
Thank you. I'd like to begin by thanking the City Council members and Mayor Charlie Hayes for letting me speak out in support of the gas tax proposal, and thank Safe Routes to School for reaching out to their network of parent volunteers. I'm present here today to express my support for alternative means to provide funding for protecting the fabric and livability of our city. My name is Chow, and these are my daughters, Lena, Lena and Nea, and they are both students at Hayhurst Elementary. I'm a resident of southwest Portland, and every member of our family uses biking as transportation to school or work. My husband commutes nine miles to northeast Portland, and I have a seventh grader that bikes two miles to Robert Gray Middle School, located north of Beaverton Hillsdale Highway in the Hillsdale neighborhood. And my two eight-year-old daughters pedal push their stout legs about one and a half miles round trip to Hayhurst and home. For all good reasons, we encourage biking to stay active, to get fresh air, to inspect our environment, to avoid traffic, and the best perk, to get front-row parking. Biking is a value and an integral part of our daily lives, and this is only possible because of the bike lanes and safe routes on our commute. However, these must be maintained, repaired, and improved, so that the safer routes are accessible to all residents. Each of our bike commutes have inherent risks. I would like to point out, my son's commute could be safer if additional funding better protected him from cars on Beaverton Hillsdale Highway. And where my girl's bike, they could have visible signage and lights to cross southwest 45th and Illinois Street, a busy intersection during peak drop-off and pickup times. Southwest schools, including Hayhurst Elementary, Robert Gray Middle School, were not built to house so many students and handle the amount of cars seen today. The public streets around those schools are unsafe when congested with so many cars. I'm going to go a little to add that I speak for most, I don't speak for southwest Portland, and I speak on behalf of Safe Routes to School. They've been very supportive of the programs that we have, but I don't speak for the majority of the people in southwest. There are not enough people that use the streets because there are no sidewalks, and there are few bike lanes. Funding Safe Routes to School programs and enhancement initiatives around schools and maintaining or repairing roads are necessary to ensure a healthy future for our city. Educating early the benefits of active commuting helps... Educating early the benefits of active commuting helps to improve overall wellness of our population. If the city could provide safer roads and better means to bike than drive, more bikes would be seen on the road. For southwest Portland, I envision electric assist bikes weaving up and down the hills, but the reality is we need more bike lanes. To keep this brief in closing, the gas tax proposal will open a dialogue and conversation about what really matters to our city and what values we want to sustain and nurture. Thank you for listening.
Thank you very much. Thank you all.
That's the end of our invited testimony. I just want to reflect for a moment in some of the testimony we've heard. I really look forward to working with Michael and the rest of the Transportation Justice Alliance on ensuring that we do allocate our resources in a way that's consistent with the diversity, equity, inclusion, and Vision Zero goals. I look forward to working with them in the future to identify more progressive funding sources for transportation. I will note that the gas tax actually is less regressive than the street fee we proposed over, over a year ago. According to the Bureau of Labor Statistics, the typical person in the top twenty percent of income spends about four times as much on gasoline as the typical person in the bottom twenty percent of income. So it's still not directly proportional income, but it is less regressive than an option we were considering fourteen months ago. And I also really appreciated the Portland Business Alliance urging us to not reduce the amount of existing funding that we are addressing to transportation. I realize that these are tough budget times and there are other demands, but I hope that we will fulfill our historic commitments and comply with our resolution, which says that any one-time funding, at least half of it, has to go to transportation and other infrastructure.
Thank you very much. We want to move to the sign-up sheet, but want to extend an invitation to parents with small children or people with disabilities to come up first. I've already heard from one family here, and this girl's did a great job, but we don't want to test our luck. So if there are people here with young children or who need to get home to them, feel free to exercise the prerogative to come up first. And likewise, if there are folks here with disabilities that would like to come up first, we'll take them at the outset, and if not, we'll move to the sign-up sheet.
We have a total of twenty-six signed up. The first three, please come on up, are Terry Parker, Andy Shaw, and Chris Smith, and they'll be followed by Chris Finney Dunn, Leah Benson, and Howe Hagadorn.
Terry, I think you're first.
Thank you for the opportunity to testify. Terry Parker, northeast Portland. I obviously have my own hat on today, but I also believe I speak for a number of broad-range community members who feel the same way I do and I've had discussions with. With nearly half of the proposed gas tax revenue going to non-maintenance projects and with over eight hundred million dollars of proposed infrastructure to accommodate bicycles in Portland's TSP that often are referred to and masqueraded as safety improvements, any increased capacity for motorists is virtually nonexistent and even being reduced with road diets. Bicycle infrastructure is not an entitlement program. There is also an enormous mass transit project list that will require an immense amount of taxpayer subsidies for operations, even though car trips are expected to increase by forty-nine percent over the next twenty years, regardless of how much mass transit service is added. Not only do Tri-MET's buses do the heaviest damage to Portland streets, but public transit on average uses more energy per passenger mile as measured in BTUs and creates more emissions per passenger mile as measured in CO2 than driving a fuel-efficient car. Transit riders on average are subsidized, taxpayer subsidized, at more than sixty cents per passenger mile. It is unjust to pile more taxes onto motorists rather than equitably and proportionately distributing some of the burden of payment to the users of the alternative modes. Without a tax on transit fares and bicycle-paid user fees to pay for supersized bike lane space and their huge I-want lists such as barricading off Clinton Street for a bicycle freeway, a standalone increase in the gas tax is both tax discrimination and biased social engineering. Furthermore, the city club concept of charging higher registration fees related to the weight of a car or light truck is an attack on the middle-class households that need to have a family-sized car or cargo-capacity vehicles. Instead of continuing to unjustly profile and extort Portland motorists, the city council needs to start providing more than just lip service equity. This includes proportionally adding motor-specific representatives to all of P-Bot's advisory and oversight committees, stacking the deck with alternative mode users to advise how the dollars are spent, and not including the primary financial providers that pay for the majority of TSP projects is yet another outright form of motorists-directed discrimination. The public process is clearly broken. Is this hearing just window dressing for a decision already made? When one mode, user mode is taxed and the special interest modes are not, trust in government becomes lost. Taxes are rarely temporary. This gas tax increase measure needs to be opposed if it is not coupled with a tax or fees on transit riders and freeloaded adult bicyclists. Thank you.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor. Commissioners, thank you. My name is Andy Shaw. Nearly one year ago, the City Club of Portland convened an all-volunteer committee to examine the city's street safety and maintenance funding crisis. I was a member of that committee last year. Our report, published last September, made three primary recommendations. First of all, that after decades of underfunding, many of Portland's roads, sidewalks, bike lanes, had fallen into disrepair, adding up to an incredibly expensive and still increasing maintenance backlog. Deferring maintenance today increases the cost of repair exponentially, as you've heard already. It forces future city councils to choose between crumbling roads and vital services like affordable housing and public safety. Secondly, while roads in Portland have gotten safer over the past two decades, these benefits have not accrued across the city, as you also have, you've heard earlier, and the majority of fatalities have occurred east of 82nd, something that the committee found to be something we need to address now. Third, a local gas tax is the preferred method to raise the funds necessary to address all of these challenges. A gas tax is cost-effective. It can be raised through existing collection mechanisms already in place for state gas taxes and local gas taxes. A gas tax is fair. The more people use roads, the more they pay. A gas tax is equitable. On average, high-income householders drive more than low-income householders. A gas tax is comprehensive. Non-Portland residents who fill their tanks in Portland also are then paying to help drive on the streets that they benefit from. And finally, a gas tax has the added value of creating an incentive for more people to get around by walking, biking, transit, ride-sharing, leading to less congestion, less pollution, and fewer crashes. In order to fund the life-saving road improvements and cost-saving maintenance that we need, the City Club of Portland urges you to unanimously pass this ordinance and refer a ten-cent local gas tax to the May 2016 ballot. Thank you.
Welcome.
Good afternoon. Chris Smith. I am a member of the Planning Sustainability Commission. However, I am speaking here as an individual informed by my service in that commission. I will admit that during the debate on the City Club report, I was in the minority, arguing for a progressive utility fee is a better option to do this, but I am not a sore loser, and I am here to, without conditions, urge you to pass this measure today. We've been at this for a long time. I personally am an alumnus of the 2008 Safe, Sound, and Green Streets Committee, which helped prompt a small increase in state gas tax, but we quickly saw that absorbed by lost purchasing power and largely by the Selwood Bridge contribution that Portland made. We still have a tremendous need. And to connect some of the policy dots, the Portland Plan, our strategic plan, recognizes that we cannot achieve our citywide strategies without new transportation revenue. And right now, you're in the midst of considering the comp plan. That includes a TSP project list that is built on the idea of a constrained transportation project list as the things we think we can pay for. The assumptions that go into what we think we pay for include this revenue and more that it is expected that you will adopt. So if, if we're not able to do this, you have to start trimming that list because it won't be real. So I urge you to adopt this, I think primarily for my role as a multimodal transportation advocate. We need our street network to be both maintained and to be safe, and this is an important step forward, and I urge you to adopt it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all.
The next three are Chris Finney Dunn, Leah Benson, and Hav Hogadorn, and they'll be followed by Rebecca Hamilton, Jen Kavatsky, and Ophelia Miracle.
Good afternoon. My name is Kristi Finney Dunn. I am here on behalf of Oregon and southwest Washington families for Safe Streets. Our group advocates for safer streets for all road users, whether in a vehicle, on a bike, or walking. The cost to join our group is extraordinarily expensive, the loss of life or serious injury to our loved ones on local streets. My son Dustin was killed in a bike lane on Division in 2011. Kim's son Joe was struck down in a marked crosswalk on Division. Cindy's husband Marcos died after a driver plowed into his vehicle at an intersection, and Christina's daughter Mona was seriously injured crossing a street near her school. I'm sure everyone here can agree that the price we have paid is more than anyone should have to bear. That is why we feel it is imperative that measures be taken to improve safety on our streets as quickly as possible. We cannot stress enough the urgency we feel on this matter. Our hearts, already broken by the loss and injury of our own loved ones, are shattered anew when we hear of another road tragedy and another family suffering the unimaginable. We truly believe that this devastation is not inevitable, and it is not acceptable. That's why we urge you to put this gas tax for safer roads and the repair of streets before the voters. We feel everyone deserves to feel safe, to be safe, and to be comfortable on our local roads, whatever our mode of transportation. We don't want any more people to qualify for our Families for Safe Streets group. If we must contribute financially to make that happen, we personally are glad to do so, and we hope that others will join us in helping to make the more, to make more livable streets for current and future generations. We feel it is a responsibility of all people to work together for the common good. You passed a resolution toward Vision Zero, and you must continue in that endeavor. We expect that you will commit, that you will keep this commitment in mind and do what you must to make it happen. And on my, for my own self, I want to say thank you for that, and thank you for the opportunity that I personally have to be engaged in that process. We don't want any more Dustins, Joes, Marcos, and Monas on our roads. Thank you.
Thank you for your advocacy. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Leah Benson. I'm here as a small business owner. I own a bike shop in northeast Portland called Gladys Bikes, and I took time out of my day managing the shop because I strongly believe this gas tax is an important investment in the economic vitality and livability of the city of Portland. You can ask just about any entrepreneur, and they'll tell you that learning to manage the books and make thoughtful investments is a key skill in preparing for long-term success. The same applies here. And for over thirty years, the city of Portland has been unable to secure the necessary funding to keep up with the natural deterioration of our streets. The lack of repairs has big implications to my business and our community. Let me tell you, Portland is a pretty great city to own a bike shop in. We're known for great riding, exciting infrastructure, and safer streets, and as a result, we've got a whole lot of bike riders and lovers here. That said, we cannot continue to rest on our laurels and ignore the fact that many of our roads are in dire need of upkeep. The continued success of the bike economy here is a complicated web, to be sure, but having good roads to ride on is undeniably crucial to that success. If someone does not feel safe riding on our streets, she sure isn't going to walk into our shop's doors to buy a bike, much less ride it. It's time to implement a sustainable plan for the maintenance of our streets. That said, my support for this gas tax hinges on the city of Portland's commitment to partnering with the Transportation Justice Alliance to ensure that project development addresses equity concerns. It's critical that our investments in sidewalks, crosswalks, and safe routes to school programs help empower all citizens to share in the livable communities we cherish as Portlanders. So I ask you to please vote yes today to allow us Portlanders to make this investment in our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hi. My name is Howe Hagadorn. I'm here as a mom and a citizen of Portland. I am a mother of three kids ages six, ten, and twelve. I believe that the city is desperately in need of investing money to make our streets safer for everyone. As a mother that sometimes drives, drives, sometimes rides transit, but mostly bikes with my kids, we are confronted every day with the challenges and obstacles to safer streets. Two of my kids and I commute from north Portland to downtown every day to go to school and work. My oldest takes Tri-MET or bikes part of the way for his five-mile commute to Da Vinci Middle School. Biking with my kids allows me to have many conversations with them about what they see and what they experience, and here are some of their experiences. My six-year-old feels mostly safe biking to school, but the ride home is a different story. When we start heading up north interstate near Kaiser, he yells, "Sidewalk." He wants me to be sure, he wants to make sure I know that he wants to ride on the sidewalk because he feels much more comfortable being separated from the big trucks. He feels scared riding alongside big trucks speeding up the hill. When the city added wider buffered bike lanes on North Williams, I was curious about what my ten-year-old thought, since we often ride at home from school to basketball practice or his baseball games. And he really likes, you know, he really likes the new bike lanes, and he feels much safer because the bike lanes were wider and he didn't have to play leapfrog with the buses. And he's, his experience is coming from a kid that has been hit by a car in our neighborhood, so wider bike lanes are, are even good for ten-year-olds. So my twelve-year-old, in the last year, has found a new sense of independence gained from a monthly Tri-MET pass and shouldering the responsibility of getting himself to and from school. He's very comfortable taking transit, but prefers to bike when he can because it is faster. He's the one I worry about the most because he wants to bike everywhere, and as a concerned mother, I know that not all streets are equally safe. So here's a story, just yesterday, he wanted to ride his bike to one of his after-school activities in northwest Portland with his friend. I compromised by asking them to meet up with me on the edge of downtown, and we would ride our bikes together the last point seven miles. Why? Because he was in the middle of rush hour, there are no good bike facilities, it was dark, and I felt it was unsafe. So he was running a couple of minutes late, so you know how twelve-year-olds are. I got a text from him, and it read, "We are at the post office, but we are going to ride to practice on our own. Where are you?" "You" is all in caps for extra emphasis. And this is the reality I'm confronted daily. Please make our streets safe for my kids and for other kids in Portland. If you make our streets safe for kids, the streets will be safer for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all very much.
I'm going to go with Mr. Joe Walsh and Rebecca Hamilton and Jenek Kavatsky, sorry about that, and they'll be followed by Ophelia Miracle, Amy Subak, and Steve Gutman.
Okay, Mr. Walsh, I think you're next.
My name is Joe Walsh. I represent Individuals for Justice. It's a very awkward position for us to be in because we agree with you, the streets have to be fixed. We need the safety on our streets. I live on 74th and Division, so I'm very close to 82nd and often take the max. So I'm above 82nd a lot. So all of the representations to you that the southeast has to be fixed, it's unsafe. Nobody can argue that. One of my concerns is that when the City Club presented their report to you, they claimed that we were in two-hundred-and-five million dollars in the hole in the Department of Transportation. And nobody seems to say what happened. Who's responsible for that? And that's our concern. We don't want you just to move on and do a ten-cent a gallon tax, and there's four other taxes coming. And I think if you want to learn the trust of the people, whatever taxes you're thinking about, and these are parking taxes, I understand, and other taxes that will fill in the gap because sixty-seven million dollars is not going to do it, and we all know that. So why don't we be honest, just for a change? Try it, you may like it. Say to the people of Portland, this is what we need. When I want something, that's what I say to Patty because she handles the finances. I don't ask for ten dollars if I need fifteen, I ask for twenty. And then I negotiate down to fifteen. That's the unionism with me. Do the same thing, be honest with the people. This is not the final tax. This is one. You have to bring this up, to put it on the ballot because that's the law. If you're going to do a gas tax, you have to put it on the ballot. There's four others that you don't. So tell the people that. If it's two-hundred-and-five million, Commissioner Novick, tell the people that. If it's more than that, and some people seem to say it is, be honest with them because if you lose the credibility, you're going to lose this vote. And we've been screwing And we've been screwing around with this now for two years. We have street taxes, we have fees. Please fix the streets and do it honestly. Don't say, "What's the best way to do it?" What would they believe? Just be honest. Ask for the 20 bucks, negotiate down to 15. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Welcome.
Good afternoon, Mayor Hales, members of City Council. My name is Rebecca Hamilton, and I am here today representing the Portland, City of Portland's Pedestrian Advisory Committee, and we would like to express our strong support for the temporary ten-cent per gallon gas tax and its use to fund the City of Portland Street Repair and Safety Improvement Program. The PAC is a group of appointed representatives from all over the city. We bring the interests of the Portland Commission on Disabilities, the East Portland Action Plan, and dozens of other neighborhood associations and community groups throughout the table, throughout the city. Many of us have been a part of this committee for years, and over the years, we have been, we have become uncomfortably familiar with where the lack of consistent funding has left us. We have worked with P bottom budget committees on priority, on prioritization exercises where we are asked to select a small handful of critical safety projects for funding out of a list of over more than a hundred, and on grant applications where we compete with other cities for a shot at our most basic funding, at funding our most basic infrastructure needs. We see how very few sources of funding there are for pedestrian, for pedestrian projects and how small those few sources are. And on behalf of the people that we represent, who deserve to walk to school on a sidewalk or cross a street without taking their life in their hands, we are not happy about it. That is why the PAC strongly supports funding the Street Repair and Safety Improvement Program through the proposed gas tax. This program would provide some of the only dedicated, reliable funding that we have for pedestrian projects that would literally help save lives. Our city has made a commitment to Vision Zero, but if we don't back that commitment with funding to pay for the safe routes to school connections or better crossings on our high street corridors, high crash corridors, then we're making an empty promise to the people of this city. We can't kick this can down the street again, hoping that Salem will step in to solve our problems for us. It is time we stop looking to dead-end sources to fund our immediate infrastructure needs. The PAC supports the city in taking ownership of our transportation future through a local gas tax as proposed so that we can build the safe network that our citizens deserve. Thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mayor Hales, members of the City Commission. My name is Garrick Kranzke. I'm the advocacy director with the Bicycle Transportation Alliance, and our mission is to create healthy, sustainable communities by making bicycling safe, convenient, and accessible, and we've been focused on that mission for over twenty-five years. Today, I'm here to ask you to vote yes on the proposal in front of you to refer a temporary gas tax to Portland voters to help fix our streets. We are convinced that safe streets for all Portlanders should be a top priority and that a majority of residents want to see more money dedicated to making this happen. This is especially true where conditions are worst and individuals are most at risk. We also need to balance out our interests with the reality that flat taxes, by definition, are not progressive, and in this proposal, many of the safety projects are in neighborhoods that need the investment most, which can help ease the burden of increased transportation costs. I want to thank Commissioner Novick for his statement here today about a continued commitment to looking for more progressive funding sources for future transportation needs. We look forward to partnering with the city and the Transportation Justice Alliance in that deeper focus on equity. Some of the highlights from this proposal in BTA's perspective include the investments in our commitment to Vision Zero, that vision of achieving zero serious injuries and fatalities on our streets, which is utmost important to us. Over $8 million for safe routes to school, $6 million for new sidewalks, $4 million for safety improvements on our highest crash corridors, 3.2 million for new protected bike lanes, and 2.4 million for neighborhood greenways. These are fantastic priorities, and we hope to see them fully funded through this measure. And in addition to my role at the Bicycle Transportation Alliance, I've been serving as a volunteer on the Bureau of Transportation's Budget Advisory Committee for over the last six years, and I'll just take this opportunity to remind folks of some of the deep and systemic cuts that that agency has taken within the last five years. Those were hard conversations around how we find $16 million worth of ongoing budget cuts in one year and $5 million worth of ongoing budget cuts in the next. We have not yet seen those cuts restored, and so we're thrilled to see that this temporary gas tax is moving forward for a vote of the general electorate, and we hope to see it made permanent and expanded in the future. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Thank you both. Okay, next.
Are Ophelia Miracle, Amy Subak, and Steve Gutman, and they'll be followed by Carrie Schlosshauer, Chris Rall, and Joe Rowe.
Welcome.
Hi.
Go ahead, your friend.
My name is Ophelia Miracle. I am fifteen years old, and I go to Grant High School. I grew up in Portland, and I've been using TriMet to get around town since I was fifteen, oh, I'm so sorry, since I was in fifth grade. I am not old enough to drive, so it makes it a little difficult to get around town, and my mom just had another baby, so I have a little brother, so it's hard for her to drop everything to take me places. So when I need to get to school, want to visit a friend, or go to the movie theaters, I count on the City of Portland to keep the roads safe enough for me to walk to the bus stop, ride my bike, or to, or to get to Grant High School. This allows me to get exercise, develop my own independence, and get where I need to go without waiting for my mom to drive me across town. That's why I'm here asking you to let the City of Portland vote yes on the gas tax to help students like me get across town. I can't wait for the safer streets, including students in Southwest worried about the new PPS boundary changes, and the students in East Portland who have to cross busy streets with speeding cars without sidewalks. We desperately need the gas tax to raise the $8 million that will directly improve all Portland Public Schools districts, from Grant to David Douglas. Please vote yes today to make easier for students like me to get to school.
Thank you. Thanks very much.
Thank you for taking time off to come in today.
Yeah, appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you.
I just, I want to say, I actually live across the street from Grant, and you make us proud for being here, so nicely done.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good afternoon. My name is Amy Subak, and I am a co-founder of Vision Zero USA. And as co-founder of Vision Zero USA, I'm elated that this measure allocates funds to implement Vision Zero on the ground in Portland in the most dangerous and, dangerous and high crash corridors. And as a mother of two young children in northeast Portland, I support this ballot measure because I know that kids are healthier and better able to learn when they get to walk or bike to school safely. The funding for safe routes to schools will make all of Portland's children and vulnerable citizens much safer. Crossing the street to go to school, or a playdate, or the grocery store should not be a matter of life or death. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you both.
The next three are Carrie Schlosshauer, Chris Rall, and Joe Rowe, and they'll be followed by Scott Koacher, Matthew Masetic, and Paul Romaine.
Good afternoon.
Hi, how are you?
Good, go ahead.
Thanks. Mayor Hales and remaining commissioners, thanks for having me here today. My name is Carrie Schlosshauer, and I represent the Safe Routes to School National Partnership here in the Pacific Northwest. I'm also a mom to two young boys who unfortunately could not be here today. One of them is napping, and the other one's in kindergarten. But they did want me to let you know, the only thing they love more than pointing out potholes and cracks in our streets is watching the paving and construction equipment that comes to fix our streets. I would like to thank Commissioner Novick and the Portland Bureau of Transportation for their work to identify, highlight, and begin to prioritize investments needed in our transportation system, especially in historically under invested parts of the city. As with nearly every other city in the country, unfortunately, Portland has significant disparities in the geographic allocation of safe infrastructure for getting around. People who walk in the city's poorer neighborhoods are three times more likely to be killed in traffic compared to those in the wealthier parts of the city. This simply cannot continue to be our MO, especially in a city that has adopted a Vision Zero strategy. So we support and are pleased to see essential safety projects in diverse low-income communities where the needs are greatest, greatest with this proposal. As you've heard from others, Portland has an exemplary program of education and encouragement programs that promote safe routes to schools. It's arguably one of the best in the nation. Many of Portland's schools sit on or near busy and unsafe streets that put our children at risk on a daily basis, regardless of that. So safety is an essential priority, and we're very pleased to see this be part of the proposal. It allocates $8 million for safe routes to school improvements, approximately $500,000 for each high school cluster, which will fund projects that have been identified and asked for, for years. These safety projects will positively affect students at more than thirty-five elementary, middle, and high schools in David Douglas, Park Rose, Reynolds, Centennial, and Portland Public School districts. These improvements will include school crossings, paths, and missing connections, sidewalks, traffic calming, bicycle route connections for youth in all corners of our city. They need these safe routes to get to and from school and in their community. They're already using these routes, and they need them to be safer. I just want to close by saying thank you for looking at this proposal, and just to make sure that you consider our kids as our future. They need these safe routes to get around, and I hope to see this go unanimously to the voters. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Mayor Hales, commissioners, thanks for the opportunity to speak with you. My name is Chris Rall. I am the Pacific Northwest Field Organizer with Transportation for America. Transportation for America is an alliance of elected business and civic leaders from communities across the country united to ensure that states and the federal government step up to invest in smart, homegrown, locally-driven transportation solutions because these are the investments that hold a key to our future economic prosperity. However, Congress passed a transportation bill that locks us into five more years of mediocre federal funding, and the state of Oregon failed to pass a transportation package in 2015 to address road, bridge, maintenance, and other transportation challenges. When the roof of your house is leaking, you don't wait for someone else to come and fix it for you. Streets are like houses in that preventative maintenance protects the investment and saves taxpayer money. Maintaining a road in good condition over time costs less than half the cost of making major repairs after letting that same road deteriorate to poor condition. Our children and grandchildren have a better shot at prospering in this city if we leave them safe streets and good repair rather than unsafe streets and a heavy burden of deferred maintenance. The user fee proposal under discussion today could help the City of Portland get a handle on its street maintenance challenges and address safety issues. Other cities are moving to fund transportation with local funding. For example, the city of Seattle recently passed a $930 million measure to fix streets and bridges, improve safety, and invest in transportation options. Portland's relatively modest proposal deserves strong consideration, and we look forward to supporting the discussion with information and ideas from our national network of leaders and experts. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you both.
Next three are Scott Koacher, Matthew Masetic, and Paul Romaine, and they'll be followed by Ruth Ann Bennett, Craig Rogers, and Mr. Lightning.
Good afternoon, welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Matthew Masetic, and I own and operate Red Castle Games in southeast Portland. So Red Castle is located on Foster Road, which, as you know, is a currently designated high crash corridor by the city. I experience this on my daily commute with aggressive driving, tailgating, and speeding, and I see how it affects our community. I also experienced firsthand this past year the crash aspect of a high crash corridor when in April, a drunk speeding driver smashed into my business during business hours. Amazingly, no one was hurt or killed. Foster Road, as it's designed now, promotes this behavior because it's made just to move vehicles as quickly as possible, and it doesn't pay attention to community needs at all. Foster Road has been addressed, however, with the Foster streetscape, and we're very lucky for that. However, many other high crash corridors, this hasn't been addressed, and with passage of this tax, it could be, and it could help save lives. I also support this tax as a business owner because my employees rely on transit, they rely on biking, they rely on cars to get to my store. My customers also rely on these features, and all my product arrives by FedEx and UPS. Everything uses the transportation system. The first time street funding was discussed that I was part of was back in 2014, but I quickly learned that back in 2007, back in 2001, it's been an ongoing debate for years, and I implore you, be the first council in decades that takes a step to start finding a solution to this funding crisis. This tax may not fill the hole, but it will stop us from digging it any deeper for the next four years, and investing in our streets now just makes good business sense. I had an issue with the sidewalk in front of my store where it sunk a little and created a puddle, and I ignored it, and it keeps sinking to the point where my customers would call it a moat, and my diehard customers would hop it no problem, but the normal customers walking by that might stop and otherwise, you could see them look at the large puddle, hesitate, they didn't want to get their shoes wet, and they kept going. And the fact is, convenience is king, and if people can get around easily, whether it's on a sidewalk or on a street, that will help promote business. I could have, early on, I found out, mudjacked the sidewalk to level it and paid a few hundred dollars, but instead, I let it get worse, and I ended up paying thousands to jackhammer the sidewalk and replace it, which I'm sure many business owners are familiar with. Let's not kick the can down a pothole-riddled street for future citizens, future business owners, and future city leaders. You know, let's take charge of our streets, and I'm asking you, help save our streets.
Thank you. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Mayor Hales, members of the commission, I'm Paul Romaine. I'm an attorney in Portland, and I'm representing the Oregon Fuels Association. Sort of feel like a possum on I-5 during rush hour right now, but it's okay. I'm used to that. A couple of things. First of all, this, this is how a local gas tax works. It's imposed at the wholesale level, basically. It's not a sales tax at the retail level, which means that whoever buys the gas to distribute in the city of Portland is paying extra. And so what that does, they sell it to the people who are in the city, and then those people end up selling it to those who come into the station. The problem with it is that your cost of doing business in the city have now risen. So if you're in a central area of the city where people don't have choices, you're really, then you're, you're probably okay. People are stuck paying the extra 10 cents or whatever you pass on. But if you're on the periphery, you have to make a decision, which is, do I eat the tax? Do I pass on some of it? Because you're competing against people outside of the boundary who aren't paying the tax. That's why we like state gas taxes, we don't like local gas taxes. So that may explain a little bit of why we're here. Rather than go in, into why this is a bad idea, which I've said a few times, I just wanted a couple of practical considerations. One of them is, the, the measure itself that you're sending to the voter is the ordinance. It's your Exhibit A to this resolution. Now, that's the only thing that really can be covered in a ballot title, not your wish list of projects, which frankly is just a wish list. So your ballot title really needs to be revised, and it will be challenged if it's not revised. All the project lists do not belong in there. They're not in the ordinance, and anybody in the audience who thinks that those projects are sacrosanct are just, is just wrong. You can change that at any time. That's number one. Number two is, your explanatory statement, again, for the same reasons, is flawed. It needs to state what's in the ordinance. Your explanatory statement basically is a, a statement in favor of the measure, which is allowed in a ballot voter's pamphlet, but under a different category. So if you're gonna have in a ballot title and an explanatory statement, at least make them legitimate and fair so that people who are voting on this understand that, yes, they're gonna be paying 10 cents more, whoever's doing business in the, in the city, but all those projects are, yes, that, that's something you pass now, but just like what you did, your predecessors did with the utility fee, it can be changed without a vote of the people. So we would ask that you correct the ballot title and the explanatory statement. Thank you.
Mr. Romaine, can I ask you a couple of questions?
You can ask me as many as you want.
What's the cost of a gallon of gas at the retail pump today versus two years ago? Just in rough terms?
I, I have absolutely no idea. I don't pay attention. All I know is I fill it up for less than, I can fill it up for less than $2 a gallon, where I used to be able to fill it for $4 a gallon.
It's about my experience. It's, it feels like it's about half. I'm paying half.
And it fluctuates. That's, that was a function of the Saudis, it still is today. The Saudis basically trying to take out Iran, take out Russia, take out the US oil production, take out Venezuela, and the Canadians, which they've been actually quite successful in doing. But that, it may change.
The point I just wanted to make is, now that I'm using my daughter's car because she's in another country and I'm filling it up, I'm instructed I'm paying about half what we did a couple of years ago. So just from your point of view, if there were a time to impose a gas tax, is it, is it a better time when, when you're paying much? better time when you're paying much less at the tax?
Mr. Mayor...
You don't have to do that here.
I don't have to do that here?
No, actually...
Much less formal than the legislature. Hopefully more productive, too.
Yeah. That's an understatement. Commissioner Fish, it's, from a political standpoint, sure. Price is low, and that's why a lot of fuel issues now are going to come back to bite people in the butt about two years from now, three years from now, whenever the price of oil goes up. We know it's going up.
So this is a four-year temporary tax. So if the folks that you represent don't like this approach, what approach would you support?
Commissioner, we have...
And I say that because the people that you're -- the folks that you represent fill the tanks of people who drive in our roads, and the roads are falling apart, so they have a very immediate interest for a number of reasons to have the roads maintained at a higher level. If this failed, where would you link -- on what proposal would you link arms with us to get additional revenue?
Well, Commissioner, we have tried. We tried during the last session to get a statewide gas tax. We were unsuccessful. Something called the Low Carbon Fuel Standard kind of got in the way. It's still in the way and probably will stay in the way until, you know, some realization comes of how much cost that is adding to a gallon of gas. But basically, we're looking for statewide solutions that would come down to the city. From our standpoint, a statewide solution works. A local solution doesn't. We can go up a lot with a state gas tax. We just have a hard time with a local gas tax. Now, local gas taxes within our organization are, whether we oppose them or are in favor of them, are determined by those dealers and jobbers who work in the particular area. So I know that Commissioner Novak is ready to pounce on me about why we didn't oppose the Troutdale tax, but that was...
He'll have the full amount of time to pounce on you. I just want to get -- I want to understand...
But it's because we basically look to what occurs in a particular jurisdiction and whether those people want to be in favor of it or opposed to it, whatever they want.
Okay. And my final question is, and I probably should ask Commissioner Novak, because he's sort of an expert on this. If after today or whenever we act on this, you continue to disagree with the ballot title or the explanatory statement, your option is to go to court and have a circuit court judge decide the question?
Yes, that's the option that's provided by statute and by your ordinance, on ordinance or code.
So if we end up agreeing to disagree on either of those, you still can go to court and have a neutral decide that question?
Yes, we can, and we will. I'm just saying that if you want, we can -- a lot of times, that's worked out ahead of time. You can sit down and say, this is how it really should be, and we'd be happy to sit down and talk with you. We know you're going to pass this thing. We assume you're going to pass it. What we're saying is, if you're going to pass it, at least be fair about what you're sending out to the voter.
And the last question is, you know, it's not every day that we have a panel that has the diversity of views that have come in before us to support this. So the Portland Business Alliance sitting next to the BTA, sitting next to this and that. So there is -- Commissioner Novak has done an admirable job building a broad coalition. Other than the Oregon Fuel Association that you so ably represent, are there any other industry groups that, to your knowledge, that oppose this proposal?
Yes, there are. Quite a few, actually. We've had meetings at our office. We're not at liberty to disclose, but frankly, the idea of a load fee has brought a whole bunch of people out of the woodwork, thinking that that may come down the line. There are also people who just don't like a gas tax. There will be a very broad coalition opposing this at the ballot in May. I can guarantee you that. I'm not at liberty to say which ones, frankly, because we were waiting to see what exactly the proposal would be. Thank you.
So a couple of your members in my neighborhood are about a half a mile apart. They're different ownerships on the same neighborhood Main Street, and at any given time, the price of gas at those two stations is roughly 10% to 15% different.
Local decision. Everybody decides...
So what's the level of gas tax that would come out in the wash in a marketplace that, whereas Commissioner Fish has already noted, the price has fallen precipitously, and where there's already at least as much variation from block to block around the city? What's the level of local gas tax that would fall below the pain threshold if 10 cents isn't it? Is it zero, or is it some other number?
Mr. Mayor, we have not discussed that. I can't really tell you. All I know is that different stations have different reasons for what they charge. Some may take in a lot more volume and base it on make less per gallon, sell more. Others may say, I'm going to make a little more per gallon. Some actually have attendance who have full benefit packages. Those are probably the most expensive stations in the city. There's a few around. There are very few, if any, stations that are actually owned by the major oil companies. That used to be a big issue with us, but they're not owned by the major oil companies. That's why you know that there's not a lot of profit in retail oil right now. Unless you have a hole in the ground, there's not a lot of profit.
If we were to do what Clackamas County is poised to do, and that is adopt a local vehicle registration fee, would you support that?
I personally would love it if Clackamas County adopted a local fee.
Okay. Thank you. Other questions? Thanks very much.
Thanks.
Okay, others?
Next three are Ruth Ann Bennett, Craig Rogers, and Mr. Lightning, and they will be followed by Vivian Satterfield, Charles Johnson, and Soran Impe.
Welcome. Good afternoon.
I'm Ruth Ann Bennett. Thank you for this opportunity to speak to you. On behalf of PTE Local 17 Copia Chapter, and as a Portland resident, I'm asking you to give the people of Portland the chance to vote for better roads. We need streets to go to work, go to school, and to do so many other things. Kids and seniors need to be able to cross the street on the way to school or the bus stop. They need a safe place to wait for the bus. We all need streets to buy food, access health care, and receive emergency services. Food and other necessities need to be delivered to our neighborhoods. Our roads last far longer when we repave them and repair the cracks. This costs far less than waiting until the cracks turn into potholes, or worse yet, the street is destroyed and has to be rebuilt. Postponing street maintenance reminds me of the car owner who delays oil changes for so long that it's necessary to replace the engine or the car. Small road repairs now will save us money because we'll avoid huge repairs later. People who drive on the streets would pay the gas tax to preserve the streets. This is an efficient funding method that is widely accepted. I'm glad that there will be an oversight committee to make sure that this new funding will be used to improve our roads. The people of Portland deserve the opportunity to vote for better streets. Thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. My name is Craig Rogers, and I'd first like to say that the cornerstone of this plan should be transparent and accountable. All too often, when there's been a report made on something here at City Hall involving the city, just as an example, this recent release from the auditor's office, it says "limited oversight," and this is more common than not. We can have oversight in the words, but whether the action is done is something else. So as I said, transparent and accountable are priority. It should be a cornerstone. And I'd like to compliment you on having a hard sunset. Little do we know what we can learn in four years that we can apply four years from now to make it better. So about a year ago in May, the Oregonian held a symposium called "Roads, Threats, and Revenue." I attended. Matt Garrett sat right in front of me. First things he said was, "I don't know why people want to use something and not pay for it. Hey, I'm there." And what I'm amazed at is that a large bus or truck does the damage on the roads equivalent to 10,000 passenger cars. I'm just amazed by that. I actually think the number's phony, but I've been told by people that know that's the truth. So you're looking for other sources of revenue, such as studded tires that are charged at the point of sale, and other various fees and so forth. And if those aren't followed through, and I really encourage you to follow through on these other things, it reminds me of a joke I once saw on the back page of the Wall Street Journal. One picture, and it was a devil down there at the gates of hell, and here was a whole line of gentlemen with suits, businesspeople, politicians, and he's got his checklist while they're walking in, and all it has him saying underneath, he says, "Yeah." He says, "Woulda, shoulda, coulda." We get a lot of those down here. Thank you. Welcome. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. My name is Lightning. I represent Lightning Watchdog PDX. Commissioner Novick, you wanted that street fee passed through. Let's do a council vote. Pretty aggressive. Well, it's interesting this time around. I think that your approach is going to get something done. And in my opinion, you've looked at what's going on in the market with prices dropping dramatically, fuel costs. People have a little bit more disposable income. People understand we need the roads repaired and safety number-one focus. And you're proposing 10 cents? I think it's very reasonable. In my opinion, I would have gone up as high as 20 cents, possibly 15. 10% I think is a great number to get approved. One of the things that I like to see is that, from my position, like I say, is that we need to understand that we're going to have to put something into place pretty soon. And we can all sit there and saying we have the great plan already in the future, what we're going to do. Well, we've done that for the last 10, 15 years, so let's stop talking about it and saying you have the great plans out there, because they haven't materialized. You have a 10 cents per gas tax. It's not over-aggressive. It's not what we need to really materialize everything we want to do, but it's a beginning, and that's the key here. It's a beginning to look at, and you've also placed a sunset clause in on this. Again, you're being very reasonable this time around, and it does affect you as a commissioner, and I think you'll get this approved just by the way you're doing this. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all. Do you have any others, Carl?
The last three who signed up are Vivian Satterfield, Charles Johnson, and Soran Impe.
Okay, come on up, please. Good afternoon. Go ahead, Vivian.
Good afternoon, Mayor Hales, Commissioners. My name is Vivian Satterfield. I'm the Deputy Director at Opal Environmental Justice Oregon, and, you know, we're going through a lot of big changes at Opal right now. We just hired our new executive director, who has started his second week, and so I'm just sort of bridging the gap in between some conversations that were had previously by Opal's predecessor, or his predecessor, rather, who has heavily invested in the street fee conversation. As you know, Opal Environmental Justice Oregon represents low-income communities and communities of color, and, you know, we were heavily invested in the street fee conversation, and my understanding is that we were excited by the progressive revenue option that was on the table at that time. This current proposal, I believe, is a modest piece of the overall pie. You know, it isn't as progressive in the revenue or in the investment as we like, although there's some conceptual support for projects such as the Lens Green Ring and the Safe Routes to School engagement that we are very excited by. It's good to see that in there. I'll be likely very excited to engage with you all in the conversation, to continue to look at that project list and refine that for the folks that we serve. You know, as we have been organizing in Portland for the last decade, the population that we serve has continued to shift due to forces of gentrification and displacement. So increasingly, we are organizing in East Portland in communities that currently lack a lot of the infrastructure that other areas of Portland currently enjoy. And until we have tools such as inclusionary zoning to ensure that we have a better mix of access for all sorts of folks in the city of Portland, you know, projects and proposals like this are really critical for us to take a lens at and to see, you know, how we can also inform and engage our constituents to get their support on them. You know, we primarily are known for organizing transit-dependent people, folks who do not drive, but we also do organize plenty of low-income folks who have to rely on junk cars, quite frankly, because our transportation system isn't getting to them, it isn't getting them where they need to go. So that's a certain piece of this current proposal that is still troubling. You know, we have no ability to currently spend this money towards transit operations. Therefore, for example, Trimestar is still currently footing the bill for streetcar operations, and I understand that's to the tune of about $7 million. I was engaged in Bus Riders Unite's campaign for a fair transfer, which was a proposal to extend the transfer time on Trimestar so that we could deliver better access to folks who are living increasingly in farther areas of the city. And just for context, you know, for $7 million in transportation funds with Trimestar, we could fully restore the frequent service network of both bus and rail with that money. So overall, I'm looking forward to continuing to engage with this council and discussion with the Transportation Justice Alliance to find how we can deliver better projects to the folks who really need them, who use our roads. Thanks.
Thank you. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. It's always a privilege to testify after the best wonks from Opal, and I appreciate the, especially their work with Bus Riders Unite. At times, I've told you that I'm Charles Johnson, and I'm here testifying on behalf of Oregonians for food and shelter and compassionate wisdom. But today, I'm just bringing you three words from our most philanthropic billionaire: just do it. Bring this to the voters. I can't guarantee you that Phil Knight's behind it, but hey, he's putting a billion dollars into cancer, or if we come up with it, he probably wants us to see if we have better roads to get up to HHSU. So we're not going to have a perfect solution. The roads aren't going to get better if we have a fancy study group and another city club report. You know, it's pretty hard to oppose putting anything on the ballot, even if you're an attorney for the fuel companies and letting the people decide for themselves. So vote to refer to create the ballot measure, but also create channels so that Opal, other economic justice organizations, can engage and make sure that those people who use four times as much gas as other people, the higher-income people, we find fair, equitable taxation against them also. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Any further questions from council members for staff before we take a vote on the resolution?
I have a clarifying question, and that's, the ordinance is really specific, directing the specific ballot measure language and voter's pamphlet statement and other parts of the proposal, rather than something substantially similar. What's the process if there is kind of an appeal and it's found that we need to make a change in the title or any of the other pieces of it?
We work closely with the city attorney's office on the ballot title. There is, of course, a process for challenging anything. Ken will explain what it is.
I think Mr. Romaine adequately addressed that by saying that there would be a court challenge. The court would look at the text and the context of the ballot title and the ordinance together. We feel strongly that the text in the ordinance matches and conforms to the ballot title and the explanatory statement. And, you know, in light of the fact that there may be a challenge, I don't want to go into too much detail, but...
No, it's just, suppose whoever gets to decide says, "No, actually, you have to change it." How does that happen? Is there time for it to come back to council before the May ballot?
Well, they can, as I understand it, and Lindley Reese is more the expert on this area, but they can remove certain words from the explanatory statement or the ballot title. They can amend it. We can negotiate the change to the explanatory or the ballot title before that as well.
And the council doesn't have to approve any of those things?
I don't want to speak out of school, but I don't believe so.
I just want to make sure that we have whatever language you have in the, you need in the ordinance, so that if there is, because it specifically says, "Put these words..."
Yes, I believe we do.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for Ken? Thank you very much. Okay, I believe it's time for the council to take a vote, please. Would you call the roll?
Fritz? Well, I'm honored to be voting first on this and very glad to see P. Bott, the Portland Bureau of Transportation, building on the success of the Fix Our Parks Bond Measure and going for a Fix Our Streets Measure. And indeed, the Parks Bond Measure was "Help Fix Our Parks," and this really is "Help Fix Our Streets." This is not going to take care of all of it. As some people may recall from 2014, we had a discussion of how to take care of all of it, and it didn't go so well, and it didn't go nearly as well as this one. So I really commend that the way this has been done... So I really commend the way this has been done, as well as what's being put forward. And I'm going to quote Corky Collier from the very beginning of this hearing. "PBOT knows how to do this; they simply lack the funding." So thank you very much, Director Treat and all of your staff, for putting this together, again, having led the Parks Bond process. I know how much work the staff and the director do, and then we, as commissioners, support your work and help bring it to council and then take it to the community. Commissioner Novick and I already started that process last night at the Arts Forum and were asked the question, which clearly had the desired answer, "Will you put more funding into the arts? And why didn't you put money into the arts?" And we said, "Because we put it into street maintenance, and we need to do that." And I was told afterwards that many of the participants, that many of the audience members came up to me and said, "Yes, I support the arts, and I know you do, and we need to fix our streets." So it's really something that I believe that this builds on the 2014 process because that helps a lot more people understand that, yes, we really do have a problem. And the fact that we have a hearing that looks like it's going to get done in less than two hours shows that now we have some consensus that this is one of the ways that we're going to help fix our streets. It will raise about $16 million annually, and we need $119 million annually. So it is very much only a piece of the solution, and I agree that this council bears the responsibility to help find some other solutions before the end of the year. So I will work with the mayor, Commissioner Novick, and my colleagues on that. In some ways, it's similar to the equity discussions that we have had. We, as individuals, didn't cause this problem. It's been going on for many decades. We are responsible for helping to fix it, and I am very glad to be part of this effort. I want to just quickly address the issue of drivers at the edges of Portland. I live at the corner between Tigard, like as we go, and happily in the city of Portland. So for many years, I have had the choice of whether I'm going to shop at the Tigard Fred Meyer or at the Burlingame Fred Meyer. I switched when Multnomah County had its business income tax because I knew that those taxes were going to help schools in Portland, even though the Burlingame Fred Meyer is much smaller than the Tigard Fred Meyer. Similarly, when we, in the council, banned plastic bags, I kept going to ours Portland store because they are using paper bags and have been for, since we passed the ordinance. I know that they started paying paid sickle time to their employees before the rest of the state is going to. So we, as Portlanders, understand that it's a privilege to living in Portland. There are some responsibilities. We do have choices. And it just so happens, if you shop at our wonderful Fred Meyers with its United Food and Commercial Workers Union members, you earn points for every dollar you spend, and you get to take it off at the gas station. So my kids and I diligently saved up our points this January and filled up a car that has the biggest gas tank, and it cost less than a dollar a gallon because we were able to get a dollar off. The question of, is now the right time to do it when prices are low, or is another time when prices are high the better time to do it? I think the answer is both. Now, you know, the difference between $2 and $10, it's low anyway, so that's good. If it was $4, the difference between $4 and $10 is not that much either. And taxes in Europe on fuel are four times what our taxes are. So the other issue is that Tigard, Milwaukee, and Woodburn all already have local gas taxes. They're all much, they're less than ours. So ours will be the highest in the state, I believe, as a local measure, and that's appropriate because we're the biggest city in the state, and we have the most miles to fix, and we certainly have a lot of safety projects that need to be done as soon as possible. So thank you for your work, Commissioner Novick. Thank you for leading this wonderful effort. Aye.
Fish?
I want to start by thanking Commissioner Novick and Director Treat for their hard work in making this day possible. Steve has a tradition at moments like this of citing to a favorite song, a lyric, and I'm going to beat him to the punch. Because I think that the song that best captures this moment is one that Lennon and McCartney collaborated on. It's called "The Long and Winding Road." And it has been a long and winding road, and there have been some bumps along the way. But you never gave up, and you were committed to finding a mechanism to raise new money for safety in streets and to do it in a collaborative way. And you've accomplished that goal, and I want to compliment you for that. In fact, I was thinking about the year that you and Leah have had, and you probably have your own list of the top highlights. But I think in the last year, it's pretty darn impressive that we adopted Vision Zero and made a commitment. I think the bike share announcement with Nike as a full partner and an incredibly innovative way of launching that program is a milestone. And today, we've achieved something that probably some people thought couldn't happen, which is you found a path forward to finding a short-term dedicated revenue for our streets, and I compliment you for that. Commissioner Fritz quoted from Corky Collier, so I'm going to quote from Mr. Kransky, who in his testimony said, "This is a good start." And that's what it is, is a good start. We have a lot more work to do. But I really want to thank the leaders who have brought us to this moment. I want to thank the community partners who have stepped up to support us. And following this action, the hard part begins because we have to pass this thing. And I'm going to make the first pledge: I will not drive outside of Multnomah County to fill my tank when this passes. And that's partly for practical reasons, because I'm pretty sure it costs me a hell of a lot more to do that than to just fill up at my neighborhood gas station. So thank you for the leadership that brought us to this moment. Aye.
Altman?
Well, I look forward to supporting this measure today and at the polls in May. So thank you for crafting this and having such broad-based support. And it does seem like it's the most expeditious path to getting more resources into our transportation, maintenance, and safety system right away. Aye.
Novick?
I'd like to start by thanking the members of the bicycle and pedestrian advocacy groups such as Safe Routes to School and the Bicycle Transportation Alliance, the Community Cycling Center, and Oregon Walks, and the members of the Portland Business Alliance, who had different ideas of how to raise money and how to spend it. I want to thank them for talking to each other and thinking through this and coming to a place where they're all supportive, even though it might not be exactly what any of them wants. I was really encouraged by how those discussions went. I want to thank Ken McGare of the city attorney's office and Thomas Lanham of the Revenue Bureau, and the PBOT team, Mark Lear, Leah Treat, Steve Townsend, Jerena Cohen, Ken Lee, Del Veras, and Cece here. And Del, I want to thank you for helping put together that appeal to Santa that launched this in December of 2013. You know, we have explored every option. And, let's see, who am I leaving out? Oh, yeah, leaving out my staff. More than half my staff has worked on this. Tomore Ender, Andrea Valderrama, Chris Warner, and Katie Schreiber. Thank you all very much. And Commissioner Fish, of course, you were right. I have to have some musical reference, and because we lost both David Bowie and Glenn Fry in the past couple of weeks, I figured that I had to do whatever I could to make sure we had a tribute to them. If I did not vote fourth, if I'd been voting first, then I would have quoted David Bowie, and I would have said that, you know, this council is proving today, that has a chance to prove today that we are more courageous in terms of transportation funding than any council has been in 30 years. So to quote David Bowie, "We can be heroes, just for one day." But since voting fourth and deciding what's already been cast, I will quote the song that was co-written by Glenn Fry and Jackson Brown, "Take It Easy," and say, "We may lose, we may win, we will never be here again." Aye.
Hales?
It's nice that we can count on that, Steve. Thank you. Well, we are arrived at a good place on this issue after "A Long and Winding Road" and after a lot of work. And we're at a place where we can now do the right and sensible thing, and that's what this proposal is. You know, we have heard during the denial and debate portions of this discussion over the last couple of years, a lot of objections for why we shouldn't do something. And it's notable that today, we're only down to one, and it's the most ludicrous. But we've heard all kinds of things. We've heard that it's not a real problem, that, you know, we can wait, and it's not that big a deal. Well, that's been well documented. The size of the problem and the fact that it is growing inexorably and exponentially is now clear to most people. This is a big deal. We need to do something. And, you know, a lot of us, me included, you know, we can perhaps be forgiven for not getting around to doing something until it's really forced on us. But this is forced on us, unless we just want to really stick our head in the sand. So that objection is pretty much, I think, gone. That's why we're not hearing it now. One, another is that the city's not well-managed and that, you know, there's just a lot of waste, fraud, and abuse. And actually, a number of us were here this morning when we had the most boring, spectacular presentation that we get every year, which was our comprehensive annual financial report, and our independent city auditor, and our independent private sector auditor all come say the same thing, which is, "Everything in this city is properly managed. Every T has been dotted across, every I has been dotted." And they had no issues to report in the manage of a $3.5 billion enterprise. Not many cities could say that. So I guess the objection that we just don't know what we're doing around here financially, that's pretty hard to sustain. Another is that we're just spending all that general fund money on other things. Haven't heard that today, which is refreshing. And that's actually also pretty well-understood now. As I think Commissioner Fritz pointed out earlier, 90% of our general fund goes to police, fire, and parks. And oh, by the way, I get the budget office to produce this little spreadsheet for me every year as I go into the budget process. And it's interesting to note and not well-reported, I ask them, "How many employees do we have?" Because our biggest cost, whether it's the police bureau, you know, sure, they buy police cars and uniforms, but most of the cost is people. Sure, the fire bureau buys trucks and hoses, but most of their cost is people. And sure, we buy grass seed and paint and swimming pool chemicals, but most of the cost in the parks bureau is people. And in 2008, 2009, the city of Portland had 6,035 employees. All bureaus totaled up. Today, with a bigger population, big challenges, we have 5,834 employees, 201 less. So I guess we're not taking all that general fund money and blowing it on lots of new programs and functions because we're continuing to provide those basic services with less people than we did eight years ago. Another objection, of course, is that Congress will do it. Well, they did pass a six-year, a five-year transportation reauthorization bill. Good, we've been wanting them to do that for about 10 years. And it's positive that they did that, but they didn't increase the gas tax, and they haven't increased it since 1993. So that one doesn't hold much water. The legislature will do it. Well, Commissioner Novick and I were told at the beginning of the last legislative session, "Please stop talking about local things because we're going to do this in 2015." They didn't, and now we've heard that they're not going to do it in 2016 either, regrettably. I hope they do a lot of other good things. In fact, we're going to be talking to them tomorrow morning about all the good things that they can do. So we're down to the most ludicrous argument, which is that it's a problem for the collectors of the tax, because that's all the gas stations are. The oil companies and the gas stations collect this tax from all of us, and then they remit it. And as I mentioned, I don't believe anyone will spend a dollar to drive the extra miles to go to a different gas station to avoid paying the tax with gas prices being what they are over the next four years. So this is the right and sensible thing. We're here because we need to do something, because it is our problem. We're here because, Commissioner Novick, your leadership has been steadfast on this, and I appreciate that so much. We're here because these are our streets, and this is a basic service. I ran for this office because I wanted to make sure the city was doing a good job of funding and managing its basic services, and this is one of them, and this is really important that we all do this. And we're here because the victims of traffic violence are our neighbors and our kids. And one of the problems of being the police commissioner is that when bad news happens, I get it early because this thing goes off. And if it's a gang violence incident, it's in the middle of the night. But usually, if it's traffic violence, it's during the day because that's when people are going to work and going to school. And I don't go to every incident, but I've been to too many. And I still remember going to Southeast 136th and watching a police officer with tears in his eyes pick Morgan Cook's little coat up off the street where she'd been killed. And no police officer, no family, no mayor should have to go to that kind of incident. And that's why Vision Zero matters, and that's why we have a transportation director and a commissioner in the city that believes that that's the right and sensible thing, too, and just as doable as this is, which is to pay our bills. Thank you all for great work. I look forward to the voters of the city of Portland doing the right and sensible thing as well. Aye. Thank you all very much. We're adjourned to a recess till tomorrow.